Right, the clock on the wall says 5:15, so we will go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is November 2nd, time for a regular city council meeting of Harlan. So Jane, if you would please take roll call.
Kroger.
Here.
Blatt.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Christiansen.
Here.
Rudolph.
Here.
Shaven.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, you all received the agenda in advance. Are there any questions or comments regarding the agenda? Don't see any, so I look for a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Kroger and second by Rudolph.
Roll call, Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Thank you.
I would ask that you please state in conflicts of interest if they arise this evening. Item number two is our consent agenda, and tonight's consent agenda includes the minutes of the October 19th council meeting and claims list number 1253 in the amount of $146,553.72. Hopefully you all had a chance to review those. Any questions? Anything Jane, you want to point out on this one? Consent agenda?
No, I don't. There's a couple items that, I know you had inquired the USDA grant for the emergency equipment, some of the, a couple items were purchased on there with that money that was...
Very good. If there are no other questions, then I look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Christiansen.
Second.
And second by Shaven.
Roll call, Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson. Peterson.
Can you hear us, Richard?
Here on mute, Richard.
Oh, just move on. There he is, have a no vote.
Okay, Christiansen.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Okay, consent agenda is approved. Item number three then is to review the completion and award request for Barry Duel at the Flower Barn for his downtown Upper Story facade grant at 624 Market Street. You had some photos and information in your packet. Jane, any additional information? The building looks beautiful.
Yes, corner there, 6th and Market, 7th and Market. The Duels have continued to, over the past few years, apply and have been eligible for continued improvements. Once again, we're blessed to have the facades and Upper Story downtown. Don't critique the photographer here, but we've been trying to do some before and after photos and couldn't quite get a clearer view, but I think you'll see the two primary items that were included with this was, if you look at where the cursor is, there were the two front windows still boarded up with two primary beneficiaries or improvements with this last work on that building. And so that was the before, and with the improvements, you can see the new windows here. Looks a lot better than plywood and unfinished. So another example of the program that you've continued and you've supported, and I know with next year's budget, we're going to make a similar recommendation. But nothing else I have to add.
Okay, and that amount is for $1,730.19.
Yes, $1,730.19.
Any questions for this award? If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Kroger with a second by Blatt.
Roll call, Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
It looked like he had a connection issue, so he's not connected right now, so...
Christiansen.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Very good, that takes us on to item 3B tonight, to look at resolution number 2471 to set a public hearing date of November 16th to consider a proposed sale of city-owned real estate located at 1901 Hawkeye Avenue. And Jane, I will let you lead off with this information.
Yes, we have some guests here which I'll turn over to in just a moment, but wanted to introduce and provide some background with council over the past few years. We collectively throughout the year, as well as with our capital planning sessions each year, we've evaluated what may be long-term use and best utilization of the space on the north half of the facility at 1901 Hawkeye. Interestingly enough, and talking with, and some of you have had similar experiences, is community members drive by the facility, again, this is on the east side, as you head south of town, a majority of folks tend to think that 100% of that facility is where the college is at, and Iowa Western does a fantastic job. Yet, when that facility was built back in the mid to late, actually late 2000s, the south half has been occupied by the college. The north half was intended for incubator development space. And we've again evaluated since that incubation concept didn't fully take fruition, and we've had space there underutilized. Todd and his team have been out there, which has been certainly a great location for them. Yet, between council and our public property, we've been kicking around what might that look like to best reap the benefits for the community and the region. And with that, kind of fast forward to, and at this point, turn it over to Dr. Kenny with Iowa Western to explain what's with transfer of this property, what the intention and the vision is.
So Jane, thanks. Dr. Kenny, President of Iowa Western Community College, tonight we got Randy Bash, who represents you guys on the Iowa Western Community College Board from the Seagarden. Lori Stetts, you probably know Lori, she probably see her around a little bit more, and then Eddie Holtz, who's our Vice President for Business Affairs. Great to be here this evening. We're definitely interested in this. A little bit of background on myself. One of the approaches I've had in, you know, education is really trying to start career academies. How do we incite youth early on into careers to keep them in our communities? And I'd say, you know, a lot of studies I've seen out there, 70% of jobs in rural America now are requiring a two-year or less certificate. Okay? And so with this space, allow us to expand and provide that to our youth. I know Dr. Barnett's in here, we've had some conversations, well, prior to, I think she had just accepted a job when I kind of approached her saying, hey, I know you're going up that way, what are your thoughts on this? And I think it's a great opportunity. How do we expose our youth? You know, we can put welding programs in five high schools with five kids, but I could put them in one with 25. First of all, we're going to be saving some money to our local taxpayers, you know, by putting that together, really working with business industry to help drive what we do in our curriculum. Because what I want, the opportunities for these youth, these young individuals coming out, one exploratory. What do I really want to do? They're not always ready to go and say, okay, this is exactly what I'm doing, here I go. So it gives them that opportunity. But it gives them an opportunity to say, hey, I'm going to get enough credits or certificate while in high school that I could go directly to the workplace, or I could transfer on and get my bachelor's or come to Iowa Western and get their associate and on to a bachelor degree. So it gives them some opportunities, it gives them exploratory. So what my hope in this is that in that, I say north half, is the ability to go ahead and start offering some of those, working very closely with our local high schools to be able to do that, to give these youth some opportunities and look. You know, experience, and I really thought about it this last year, you know, I had a young daughter who just didn't know what she wanted to do, she was at Iowa Western Community College. She hated school since kindergarten, will not lie. I mean, that was that child. But she never had that exploratory. She didn't know what she wanted to do, and it was her, well, start of her second semester at Iowa Western, we're just sitting there talking, and, you know, she's at cosmetology school today. I'm excited about that. She's in a career technical education, and I've never seen that child more excited about it. So I want the ability to be able to give those youth those opportunities early on. I mean, my hopes are, is we're really, we're going to deal with them at the college level junior and senior years. I'm not wanting to supplant what's happening in the school districts, I want to supplement already what our schools here locally are doing within their school districts. It may be giving them an opportunity to take a welding instructor that they have, push them down, allow welding 7th, 8th, 9th, and 10th grade, to where right now they're only doing it 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, so it's starting to get their minds working. So I think that's number one, and really the push on me in regards to this property. Number two though, is we have a lot of adult learners out there that need to go back and get retrained. We're bringing businesses in our community that need an opportunity to force base to train, so when it's not being utilized in our current status with our college students or more with the high school students, the ability to open up that space to do training for local businesses that may need something, rather than have them coming to, unfortunately right now, council blessed the closest to do it, being able to do that here locally, but also put some things on in the evenings to take individuals that say, hey, I want to get into welding and move up so they can get that certificate, non-credit and credit side when it comes to it. The other, I think, really good partnership, I'm going to say, is we're really working with your chamber and your local economic development. I started a career academy a few years ago in Lorenz, Iowa. If you've never been to Lorenz, Iowa, it's a really small community with three major corporations. And when we tied with the economic development chamber arm, we're able to, as they're in working with businesses, they're kind of representing us, when we're in, we're with them. So I think it's going to really help to grow that opportunity to see what we can bring to Harlan and our region to grow the businesses that we currently have within there. So questions you all have of me on this? I know that's a quick overview, I could go on for the next three hours if you wanted, because I do get excited in these topics, but questions you all have of me.
You talked about welding, is there any other areas you're going to look at?
So when you start putting a career academy in, it's A, now we're on your work with your school districts, and I haven't had that opportunity yet because we didn't have the space. Now we're going to have the space, but we'll start working with the school districts, kind of where we're at. But it's really important to be driven by local businesses and the local communities. I need to be out talking to them, what are their needs? I'm going to say welding's one of those we know everybody needs right now, but let's say I flood the market with welders, we have to be able on a drop of a dime, change and get to lathe and mills, or auto, or whatever. But no, we're going to look at multiple, not just welding, I know I advanced manufacturing, I know I threw that one out there because that's the key one a lot of people hear, but I think there'll be some opportunities, diesel tech, logistics, we're already doing some CNA, we do some electrical in there, construction, HVAC, a lot of different programs that we can bring into it. But number one, assess the community needs, work with our partners in our school districts of what they're looking for, and definitely working with our local business and the industry of driven. So we'll put, as we create a career academy, we'll put an advisory board, which is, we'll include local business leaders into that to help us drive the direction that we're going. When they're seeing something changing, we got to be changing too. As I always say, I want to be on the cutting edge, not the bleeding edge. I don't want to be so far ahead of them that I'm out there, but I need to be a little bit ahead of them of what they're doing, so that we can bring the workforce for them to the community. Or keep our workforce, really.
So for our local business leaders here, do they contact Lori? Or who would they contact if they're interested in getting on board?
Lori or me? Probably Lori, she can keep kind of around, right? I'm doing a lot of these type of things, but probably Lori. You know, once we get kind of moving on this, we're going to, well, we're going to get moving pretty quick. I can't say, we've got some started up and going that we're doing in the center, by the time we do a little bit of renovation, probably not a ton, which is nice. You know, next fall is my hope to make sure we have some tracks off and going, getting with the school districts, get that going. Hopefully, we can have some training going even earlier, or I should say, earlier prior to that academy up and going. But I'd say Lori's probably the best contact on that right now, since she's our center director up this way.
I would just add some personal experience. I've got five kids and my youngest just graduated, Laj, here, went through one of the programs with Harlan, was at Iowa Western, and Lori, isn't it, he mentioned her name a lot, he mentioned your name, you missed him by a month, he went to another school.
I know.
He would have come to yours, but you, he made the decision to go, but he was oppressed. You guys took him down and they showed everybody down, Iowa Western, and so you're doing a good job.
Well, we had eight, last year we got 15, so she's done a good job. You know, funny story about that, you know, unfortunately, we did miss him, and then we missed a few of those. I think we had eight in there, and that day, when Eddie was there, Lori, I think when we asked that question, who's coming to Iowa Western, not one of them was at that time, right?
One.
One was, and we ended up, I think, getting about half of them down there, but yeah, unfortunately, we did, been here six months, we wanted half.
He talked about changing, and then he said, no, there was a little bit more DMAC.
He ended up at DMAC, that's what I was thinking, so, but yeah, so.
A great program over there too.
You know, and that's what concerns me, is the students that do leave our area. Guess what? The businesses that come in and recruit into our, or into our programs to go to work for them are going to be in DMAC, they're going to stay in Des Moines, we're not going to get them back home. And that's what always concerns me, and that's where these type of career academies, I think, have been important. This will be, well, one, two, three, this will be my fourth or fifth one that I've started in a 10-year career, so.
I think it's a great, great idea. I've also got another son who's electrician in Des Moines.
Des Moines, yep.
That's one of the reasons he, my son went that way, but he's working with the high school of Johnston's doing the same thing. They kind of partner with these businesses, and they let these kids, I don't know what's called, it was called MRC, I think, when I was back in school, and what they do is job training to the school.
Work-based learning now.
Yep, and he's, he's a young man, got to work with him to be a helper, and I'm hoping to, I mean, I'd love to have my kids come back here, but so far, I'm one for five, so...
Well, if I would have been there one month earlier. I'm sorry, I apologize for that one, so.
He's still been in the back here, so.
But you know what it is, is we start getting, even as our junior years, to be able to go out and do some work based learning, work in the summers, find those extra jobs, because we're going to put them in skill sets that can get them out there that, you know, that they can get some hands-on, but the needs for our businesses. Now, what also drives it is OSHA, I mean, age and different things like that we run in, some corporations are good to go to 16, some it's got to be 18, so it doesn't always help, but you know, we'll work with them and see what we can do, but getting them out there, getting the hands-on, you know, as I go back to the daughter I talked about, I mean, she was a hands-on learner, you know, she was not to be lectured at, and that's what we need to give these youth today, and we're getting more and more of them because their hands-on are these. You know, we got to get them off of those and get them hands-on into career tracks or pathways, as I call them.
You know, you mentioned age, and that is a hiccup in a lot of those positions. You know, my company in particular, not my company, the company I work for, but age is a limit, a limitation for us, and somehow, we also have to get to those legislators that they maybe need to look at these things, because that's that age group, again, coming out of high school, we can't tap into because of the age limit.
But I think in the state of Iowa, that has been lifted, it's going to be your insurance company and your corporate headquarters. Lawyers do not still, offline, we can talk a little bit more, I will, because I've already been into this battle with, well, with legislators and even in DC and the DOL a little bit too, because you're right, their workforce, they're there, but then we put some limitations on what we can and can't do with them, so.
I would say we had a group from your industrial tech class that came out two weeks ago, and I'd say all of them raised their hand, said they would like to have more opportunities for more learning at an academy. So I thought that was, obviously, without telling them the other things, but knowing, hey, most of them kids would like to have, you know, more space and hopefully more opportunities than us that have larger businesses that may benefit from it, and how do we contribute to it and kind of grab the students who don't want to go off to college right away or go to DMAC, and how can we keep them closer, potentially, for those that want to stay? But we have the same age limit, we're 18, you have to be 18 to even, well, the graphs for us, by the way, I mean, so.
Yeah, I know, that's, and those are things we got to try to overcome and do different things, so. And I know, Dr., you've been involved with these career academies before and understand it, so got the right team on the bus right now, we need the space now, so.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak? Todd or Dr. Barnett, or anybody want to add comments? You're welcome to, I'm going to put you on the spot.
I just want to, I just appreciate the fact that you're considering this and that Iowa Western is going to be a partner with us, because I do think, just like Mr. Shaven had said, that he has come out and we've got a partnership with Conductix as well, already working with the welding programs, and if we can do the HBAC and do some of the programs this way, and even think, even in-house, what can we do, if we do have kids that do want to go on the four-year track, what can we do for them, and what can we do for all kids, basically? So, and to get that certificate and have it before you even graduate, and then just think, you can just take off with that. So I just appreciate you, we are very excited to partner with them.
Thank you.
I'll just say again, you know, we all know that one of the number one problems we have here in Iowa is workforce. And it's not completely just bodies, it's also keeping them here, you know? So this is, this is going to be a fantastic partnership for our local area. It's going to not only help with our current businesses we have here, but again, we've talked before about the things that we need to do in our community to make it an attraction for people to come here, and this is going to be a big attraction for not only individuals to come here and possibly get retrained, to be able to fit into the business industry that we have here now, but it'll be an attraction to bring industry this way, when they know that we have this private-public partnership that takes place here with our career academy. So this is going to be, this is going to be a game changer, this is going to be fantastic for us.
And Todd or Dr. Kenny, any thoughts on employment? How many instructors will this add out there, or is that way too early to even think about something like that? We'll get that question, so.
Yeah, I can't say, I can tell you right off the bat, I mean, we'll see numbers, how we grow, stuff like that. No, I couldn't give you that answer right now, but you know, one thing that Dr. Barnett said, she's got a good welding lab out there, so do we put welding in there or do we still utilize what she has there? I mean, that's what we've got to get together and look at, so keep welding there, we expand it to something else in, at the career academy, so.
And I think we could build a, well, we can collaborate with them still and invite other districts to our, our building and the welding program, and then offer two or three different things, or offer some other things at the Atlantic, Iowa Western, and share, so we're not duplicating efforts and providing more opportunities for kids.
Of course, it has to come up, kids drive in, that's left up to the school districts, some will bus them in, some will allow them to drive in, but that's always left up to the districts themselves, so.
And we, as you know, we've had a good exchange already with the chemical lab, there was some school districts coming up and using that, so we already have an experience with other school districts coming in to use the facility, so.
Good, thank you for the information. Any other questions, council members?
I would just add a few final thoughts, and again, thinking back to those back in the 2000s that got together and fought big, and at that time, it was when Iowa Western was on 12th Street. For the folks that may or may not remember, that Iowa Western's located where Public Health Space is, and, you know, with their growing pains at that time, and getting to the other community leaders to make that facility happen. And so a great vision on their part, and now we're, what, 13, 14 years later, and this is the, as I look towards it, it's a reinvented 2020 and beyond use for this space in a very healthy and vibrant and exciting way. I did reach out, and again, first of all, it's been, just through the process thus far, been great working with all the partners on this. I had an opportunity to reach out, some of you know, to the initial supporters of that project back in the mid 2000s, and those I've spoken with, just giving them a little bit of snippet of what the intention is here, and 100% support to many of the items that Dr. Kenny has just shared. And in conclusion, some of you heard me share, may have heard me share this also, that just seemed like these conversations we had, another box got checked, and that box was called win. It just, win here, win here, win here, you know, the Chamber of Industry is going to remain there, the value seen in that, working with the school district and other districts, just the number of checkbox in the win column, to this point, have been phenomenal, so those would be my additional thoughts, and excited to see where this can go in a few weeks and get this transitioned.
Very good. Anybody else have comments? Okay, well, with that, then, what resolution 2471 says is that the city would sell the property, the north half of that building, for $1 to Iowa Western, along with some stipulations, and is again, the conversation among council members and staff has been that the value in this is for the students and the businesses in the community as a whole, not necessarily monetary. So it is for a dollar to sell. We will set the public hearing in for November 16th with this resolution to consider this sale, so I look for a motion to approve the hearing date.
It's moot.
Motion by Blatt, and a second by Shaven.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add one prior to your final vote here. An additional item in that purchase, which is, that it, what'd you say, Doc? Again, every five or so years, it seems like even education's reinventing itself, so that's not the forecast, yet if something does change direction, that within that purchase, there is that option for the city to reacquire that for a dollar. So I think it's important for, again, there was just another win, it made sense for the community, that property, its location, et cetera, so I wanted to share that before your final vote.
The collaboration with all of our conversations has been really good, so, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Jane, if you want to take roll call, please.
Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Todd Bennett will rejoin.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like, if you don't feel obligated, but.
It's pretty exciting.
Especially item 3C, which is where we are now, to receive and file the airport commission meeting minutes from October 27th. You all received those in your packet? No questions regarding that? I would look for a motion to receive and file.
Motion.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Shaven.
Roll call, Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Very good, and then related to that, item 3B is resolution 2472 to approve professional engineering services for the 2022 Airport Taxilean Improvement Project. And Jane, I'll let you give us the details on that again.
This agreement is with our airport engineer, the entire agreement was in your packet. Councilperson Kroger's been the liaison the past few years, I believe she can attest to, and Mayor Colby attends most all those meetings. The continued desire for the commission and the manager to continue improvements there, and with the FAA funding of 90%, and with this last year, 100% funding, the desire is to continue those improvements. This is specific to the applications made last fall, and just real quick visually what that looks like. So what's currently forecast for next spring is this, is the apron rehab, that's this area here in gray. What the FAA likes to see is the airside pavement needs, and being sure airside pavement needs are in top-notch and good condition. So for this project, it is here in the terminal taxiway area, so the red and green. So this engineering agreement and the current application of the FAA is for the red area, and then the green area would be the next phase after that. And this engineering agreement is $119,000, construction is estimated around $300,000, and we believe by going out to bid next spring, there may be some economies of scale we can get with the apron rehab project if bids come in favor of it. Kirk and Michael's been an engineering planner there for 20-plus years, and that's what that agreement represents. So the commission acted on this the other day, needs final blessing from you before it goes on to the FAA.
Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, then, I look for a motion to approve resolution 2472 as presented.
Motion.
Motion by Kroger, second by Christiansen.
Roll call, Kroger.
Aye.
Blatt.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Rudolph.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Okay. Item 3E then is to revise the posting of our fire engine for sale of 1993. Jane or Jane, do you want to give us a little story on this?
Yes, this is the 1993 engine that we posted, advertised through various sites and publications. We had a minimum bid of $25,000, we received one interested inquiry, we did not receive a formal bid. Would like to ask for your motion to readvertise it with a minimum of $10,000. We did follow up with the interested party, they're not making an offer at this point, and then we're also exploring a site called govdeals.com, have networked some other, with some other cities, clerks and colleagues that, just had a call with them yesterday, but even with that site, and that's an online auction site for public surplus items, it's not one we've used for, yet, used before, yet, I believe we would do, one we would consider with re-advertising, but more or less was giving update and asked for you to at least suggest we re-advertise with a less than a minimum bid of $10,000.
Okay.
What happened to the company that we bought the new fire truck from? I thought they were going to help with the resale.
We did look at that agreement, and that wasn't part of the specific services, and I don't see anything online that they have. If you found other, please share that, I'm not aware of that. And looking at the GovDeal site, just, you know, trying to do some compare and contrast, saw some other fire equipment out there, I believe there were 41 postings for other fire equipment currently on the GovDeal site, and some, quite a few rolling stock that is similar to ours, that seem to be in that 15,000 to 20,000, sometimes less in terms of the minimum bids they're looking for, so.
No chance we'll have a fire engine repair program any time soon.
I'm thinking about a fire site, I'm not going to lie to some of that one.
Good connection. Fire truck to put out the fire. On-site, ready to go. Anything Jane would add to that, then continue on with questions?
No, just, we did hear from some cities that have had success with advertising on Gov.
Okay. If there are no other questions, I'd look for a motion then to approve the posting of the Smeale fire engine for a $10,000 minimum.
Yes. Motion.
Motion by Blatt, second by Christensen.
Roll call Kroger?
Aye.
Blatt?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Okay. If there are no other questions, I'd look for a motion then to approve the posting of the Smeale fire engine for a $10,000 minimum.
Yes. Motion.
Motion by Blatt, second by Christensen.
Roll call Kroger?
Aye.
Blatt?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Okay. Item 3E then is to revise the posting of our fire engine for sale of 1993. And Jane or Jane, do you want to give us a little story on this?
Yes, this is the 1993 engine, we posted and advertised through various sites and publications. We had a minimum bid of $25,000, we received one interested inquiry, we did not receive a formal bid. Would like to ask for your motion to re-advertise it with a minimum of $10,000. We did follow up with the interested party, they're not making an offer at this point. And then we're also exploring a site called GovDeals.com, have networked some other, with some other cities clerks and colleagues that, just had a call with them yesterday, but even with that site, and it's an online auction site for public surplus items, it's not one we've used for, yet, used before, yet, I believe we would do, one we would consider with re-advertising, but more or less was giving update and ask for you to at least suggest we re-advertise with a less than a minimum bid of $10,000.
Okay.
What happened to the company that we bought the new fire truck from? I thought they were going to help with the resale.
We did look at that agreement, and that wasn't part of the specific services, and I don't see anything online that they have. If you found other, please share that, I'm not aware of that. And looking at the GovDeal site, just, you know, trying to do some compare and contrast, saw some other fire equipment out there, I believe there were 41 postings for other fire equipment currently on the GovDeal site, and some, quite a few rolling stock that is similar to ours, that seem to be in that 15,000 to 20,000, sometimes less in terms of the minimum bids they're looking for, so.
No chance we'll have a fire engine repair program any time soon.
I'm thinking about a fire site, I'm not going to lie to some of that one.
Good connection. Fire truck to put out the fire. On-site, ready to go. Anything Jane would add to that, then continue on with questions?
No, just, we did hear from some cities that have had success with advertising on Gov.
Okay. If there are no other questions, I'd look for a motion then to approve the posting of the Smeale fire engine for a $10,000 minimum.
Yes. Motion.
Motion by Blatt, second by Christensen.
Roll call Kroger?
Aye.
Blatt?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Okay. Item 3E then is to revise the posting of our fire engine for sale of 1993. And Jane or Jane, do you want to give us a little story on this?
Yes, this is the exterior look before at 811 Willow. Wish we had some of the interior photos, but for some reason, between Roger and myself, but, so those are the pre-exterior photos. Here's one and two of the post-exterior photos, so definitely clean up the property, siding, got rid of the blockade garage, and then unfortunately, these photos will, I think a few of you may have seen some interior photos on my phone previously, yet these are the post-interior photos. I'll just.
There's a floor there?
Yes, there's a floor there, as you may recall, it was quite the hoarder, and two to three feet deep throughout the entire structure, and so just a poster child of redevelopment, and as we look to other opportunities like this, this is a lower level that ended up finishing out, kept one of the brick walls for a little nice historical perspective, lower restroom, so just wanted to provide you an update and how we might approach future properties like that. The library, I think I've got one other, just hats off to our library team, they, Amanda and the team there, and I believe you can barely see it through other social media and in the newspaper, get the programming they provide, Amanda and her team just continue to deliver. This Thursday's turkey bingo, not sure what all of it involves, but it's a family night, so when I saw that come across my updates, just wanted to give a shout out to Amanda and her team with the continued programs and delivery there. They do continue to have a part-time youth services clerk, so actually has some real ideal hours. We're not immune to the challenges in the job market also, but if you know folks, please direct them to Amanda at the library. And the last two items I have are that this week, you, we will see some activity at the Dream Playground, you approve the agreement with Snyder and Associates to begin our survey and onsite planning, leading to conceptual master plan with the Dream Playground Reimagine, so we expect some activity, survey work this week. And then Mayor Colby and Sarah Pepsl off the Live Park Board have been assembling a steering committee. Ideal number of people on that steering committee from the community is between nine and 11, and I believe thus far they have nine recruited for a steering committee. So stay tuned on that, and thanks Mayor Colby, and shout out to Sarah for taking the lead on that.
People have been very receptive to answering the call, but volunteer for that two-year project, so it's not a small commitment.
Yes, and again, that's 27, 28-year-old structure, and we, in terms of our capital plan in the parks, that's the, was the next big one on the docket, and we're getting that kicked off. That's all I have, I think that's pretty short, ready? Out of here within a few hours. But comments or questions that you may have for me?
Questions for Jane?
Otherwise, it's been pretty quiet.
Yeah. Hanson House, looks like it's exploding down there, as far as what they're working on?
Yes, the Hanson House expansion there, 35,000 square foot, actually, the amount of concrete they poured today, I'm just, I think most all of the concrete's poured after today. And their intention is to bring in panels, get those panels set, trusses, and then sheet it. Having some conversation with them, they may look to use one of two, two of our lots across the way by the community garden to do some staging, and you may see an agreement in front of you at one of the next two meetings, but I'll run that through you first. Yeah, the project's doing well, and they've been a joy to work with.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jane. Okay, for my report tonight, I would like to appoint, ask for your approval to appoint Jim Shelton to the Harlan Municipal Utilities Board, it'd be a six-year term, which would end November 21st of 2027. And Jim is a quite accomplished individual, and I think he'll serve a great need on that board, so I'd like to ask for your approval of his appointment.
Is that replacing Terry?
Yes. Right, Terry Allen is coming off the board.
Motion?
Motion by Rudolph? Second by Shaven.
Roll call Kroger?
Aye.
Blatt?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Thank you, and thank you to Jim Shelton for serving on that board. I'll turn it over to Todd Beline with the Shelby County Chamber, if you'd like to update us with some information.
Yeah, a couple of quick updates, same thing I brought up at the supervisors meeting this morning, just a reminder, not only to council, but to the public watching, there's a program here in Iowa that's called Manufacturing 4.0, it's also sometimes referred to as Industry 4.0, and just recently, the governor committed a lot of rescue plan dollars to that program. So it's for manufacturers that have less than 75 employees, and what we do with this program is we look at ways that we can automate your systems a little bit, so you might have employees that are doing repetitive things that could be automated, and instead then we can use those employees to do something else within your facility. And there's two opportunities there, it can either be a actual machinery that you receive a grant for, and it's a one-to-one match, so if you're a manufacturer and you're thinking about investing $30,000, $35,000 into machinery, they would match that $30,000, $35,000, now you're investing $70,000 in machinery. And the same thing on a software side, if you need a new inventory software, something along those lines, that's also available up to $25,000. So just reminding people that that program's out there, and they can contact our office, we'll get them in touch with Iowa State, and we'll get the assessment started in regards to that. The other thing is there's a new program, well, a program inside there called Return to Rural, it's kind of a marketing program for your community, so we will be reaching out to local business leaders here to help us kind of plan what we want to do, because you've got to kind of pick an audience, who you want to go after, and what you're going to put on the table for that audience. Some communities have looked at filling teaching roles, some communities have looked at filling medical roles, some communities have looked at recruiting veterans specifically using this program. But we'll get an idea of what we think we can do, and then I'll work with a local marketing firm to put together that, that, you know, how we would reach out to these people, and we just have to have that filed with the state by the first we get a summer to see if we can get, receive that grant. On the Chamber of Commerce side, as you know, there's a couple changes taking place in the banks around here, and so what that has done for us is, we have $27,000 in gift certificates that are out in the community that haven't been cashed yet on a bank account that we need to move. So, to help us do that, our partners at Hy-Vee have said that if you come into Hy-Vee between now and December 1st, and you spend anywhere from $25 to $100, and use Chamber gift certificates to pay for it, you'll get a 5% discount from Hy-Vee on whatever it is that you purchase. If you spend more than $100, you'll get a 10% discount on that. So hopefully, folks will use those gift certificates, go ahead, you know, over the next few weeks, get their groceries, get the discounts, and that'll help us out tremendously in regards to trying to deal with that, with that bank account, so. Other, we're going to have our holiday lighting like we don't only have in the past on Small Business Saturday, and we will be doing a shop and win promotion through December, just like we did last year, details on that will be coming out soon, but, yeah, so that's a quick update from the chamber, did I make it in time?
Well, I'm going to put you over right now, so. I know we had an applicant off of your drive-through job fair. How, any?
Yeah, we ended up giving out 25 packages on Saturday for the, during the drive-through job fair, and then we've had a couple of other folks actually call our office this week and say, hey, I didn't make it, but can I come by and get a package? So we were able to get some distributed, and we may look at doing it again, and yeah, I'm hoping that some of the folks who came by took those packets home and are, we had a split in audience between people who I could tell were looking for jobs, and I had people who were looking to probably get people out of their house. Getting their job opportunity, so.
Very good. Any questions for Todd? Thank you very much for the updates. Mr. Weber with HMU, would you like to do some update?
Thank you. A couple of items, first of all, we've got a couple of meetings set up for tomorrow. The first ones were at 90% on our design for our piping, new wellfield, so it would be made with the engineers tomorrow, we'll review that, make final application to the IDNR for that part of the product, or that phase of the project. And then also tomorrow, we'll be reviewing the bid and scheduling the immediate replacement of that horizontal pressure filter number one, and that would complete the bulk of the remediation on the water plant. We still have to order new membranes for the RO units, but that's currently scheduled for fiscal year 2223, so like next July, we'll take a look at that again. As far as local work that we've got going on, we've been doing some work down around 12th and Hawkeye, that was an area that had some of the old, what we call concentric cable, where we'd had a number of faults, and some problems there with three-phase, so the crews have been working on that. We had a contractor out to put in conduit, and then we installed the cable over the last couple of weeks, so it'll be good to get that area cleaned up. And then also, we have been doing a lot of work up at Hanson House on that expansion project, running three-phase and getting the various services in. And then finally, one of the upcoming projects is we're waiting for final numbers from the engineers for an assessment of our old, of our 69 KV line down from Avoca to Harlan, roughly 12 miles. That line's approaching 40 years old, so we'll be taking a look at the poles and the conductor, connectors, and seeing what kind of maintenance we may have to get scheduled for that. The biggest area of concern right now, I shouldn't say concern, but focus, is the part that's buried along by East Side of the airport, that was installed at a time where it wasn't put in conduit, the cable, so we need to take a look at that, make sure we take care of that system. That's just kind of a quick update, we're also working on, starting our budget process, we'll be working on that for the next couple of months.
Very good. Any questions? Questions for Ken?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to ask the council if they've got any updates or comments, shout outs, whatever.
A shout-out to our fire department.
Oh, yeah.
People get up in the middle of the night and work many hours as volunteers, wonderful group of people, they do a great job. Last night, anyone? Appreciate them.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience tonight, or online, if there's anybody, make any comments? Okay, seeing none, then, I will adjourn the meeting, thank you very much.